Publish the town's select meeting to order. Ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Audience of your citizens, do we have anybody that would like to have something to say that is not already on the agenda? Go on, be careful. Then we'll move on. We need to have an approval of the minutes of July 16th, 2025 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 16th, regular meeting.
And I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye, abstained.
David's abstained because he was not here. Correspondents, we have correspondents concerning two grants that were given to each two of O'Neebo Fire Department and the Sterling Fire Department from the Medicaid Department Environmental and Energy Protection. Can't ever seem to get it covered with that last E in there. The Sterling Volunteer Fire Department that received a grant of $2,500 and they're going to use it for a skid unit. O'Neebo has received the same amount of money and they're going to use wildland power tools, supplies, tools, pumps, and accessories. This is just basically a notification. As we all know, the town and the fire companies are totally independent of each other. It's just a notification from the state that they got that money. Unfinished business regarding the 72 inch double cover on State Federal Hill Road. That project is complete. It was completed in record time, about three and a half days, and it is totally finished with, as far as the cover is concerned. We've had discussion about regarding the over-the-rail mower. The over-the-rail mower has been out all season long, mowing the sides, road sides, and has completed the entire town. It is about, I think in September they'll start again to do it one more time. Discussion regarding demolition and removal of the shed and concrete slab over the, for the recreation department. And if I'm not mistaken, you've decided to wait till recreation, the summer program is over and then you go and order the slab? And there's the shed. All right, let's be updated on that. Discussion regarding the employment contract with Jason Lachardi. We're waiting to get together with a lawyer for that. Discussion regarding the presentation of Rockwell Wagner concerning the 250th anniversary of America. That was done at our last meeting. That presentation was made and the, this Rocky Wagner is trying to get together a, working with towns, Sterling, Plainfield, Canterbury, Scotland, and Wyndham. Because those towns are the roof, were on the roof that Rochambeau took in 18, 17, a, one, thank you Neil. And he's, he's very active in the 250th anniversary of our country, which is going to take place next year. And he's trying to get a program together so they can educate the fourth through eighth grade students in all of those towns. Obviously, this comes at some expense. The, this $4,000, I believe, he's expecting from each town as far as the education portion of it. That's something that the, the school system will have to pick up. So he made a, he made a presentation to them and how that turned out, I frankly don't know. But he asked us to go for about $1,000 for signage and for other, other portion of the education for the kids for the town. Do I hear a motion that we can get on board with this and provide $1,000 for a motion? David makes a motion. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business. Discussion regarding approval of suggested creation of a contingency fund and a capital account. Something that the Board of Finance has asked us to look into. The final, we've had several discussions about this situation and we're going to contact an attorney who will sit with the members of the, some of the members of the Board of Finance, the treasurer, and myself, and we'll see if we can come up with a plan as to how to word this proposal. It'll eventually lead to another, one more ordinance that, creating a capital fund. That's something that will eventually have to go to a town meeting. That, we'll have a meeting on the 26th of this month with a lawyer to discuss the details of that. New business. Recreation Director's quarterly report. Jason, do it. You can sit if you prefer.
Thank you. So, as you know, we, we run a, a very busy department right now in the midst of our summer camp, our summer camp program. But I haven't given a quarter of the report in a couple quarters. So I'm just going to start from just the whole, from September of last year. So our after the bell program, which is our after-school program, we ended up enrolling 40 kids, which is the most that we've had. 10 of them actually came after January of last year, which was, which is typically a part of, and they, they range from age five to age 12. Our Fun Friday program, which is a monthly Friday night, same thing, elementary age kids, average attendance is 30. We take both resident and non-resident. We are very popular with Plainfield kids as well. Our basketball program really took off and that's been my, my, my project. So our program goes to, to really get a basketball league together in Sterling. And it's tough because you don't get many kids, you can't play five-year-olds with 12-year-olds. So it's, it's a difficult thing to do, but I'm, I'm confident it'll work.
Sorry, Jason, continue.
All right, so back to basketball. So the, the good thing that happened last year, we, we ran a group, we ran a program for the elementary age kids. I did not run, run one for the middle school kids because we didn't have enough. So we begin open gym on Saturdays for middle school kids with their parents if their parents wanted to play. So, and that was done on, after basketball, the elementary on Saturdays. It, it, it was okay. We had about 12 people, which was good. That, again, it took off slow, but it'll take off. But with basketball, it ended in mid-February and the kids still wanted to play. So I had a coordinator who wanted to stay. So we just did a drop-in style from five to six, another group from six to seven. I charged your kids five bucks to play. We ended up one of the nights with 50 kids, which was, it was a lot. It dwindled down, but it was great. We ran for another five weeks. And it's something that, I, I never even thought of it until somebody asked. So it's something I'd like to continue with. And we did bring in revenue with it. So it was a cost per coordinator for the budget, but the revenue was made up, more than made up for it. We also run camps for Christmas in April, resident, non-resident, 30-plus kids attended in each camp. And we also began to run days where it was a professional development day in school. So there was no scheduled day before school. The building was open. I had the staff. We just started to sign kids up and we got anywhere from 20 to 25 kids. So I mean, my feeling is we have the space, we have the building, let the kids use it. Space is tight with a lot of, you know, at different times, but let's see the hand over there. Six major events that we run, beginning in, in the fall with the Halloween party, followed by our tree lighting in December. We begin a, a first annual winter dance. It was, it was in conjunction with the PTO. We, we did 90% of the work. So next year, we're just going to take that over and over. It was held here, we had 100 people attend. It was a family dance. So it was good numbers. Our character breakfast is typically in late winter, early spring, followed by the egg hunt around Easter time, at Easter time. And then we've done more work with the memorial parade, Memorial Day Parade. That's something that I, I worked with, or linked, had me work with him on and said that's his thing. Well, and I can assure you when you're not here that we'll take that over. So that's six, six major events. We've got 175 people at each event. So it's a good turnout. Summer concerts this year, we went with nine. So four more to go in July. Through last week, we started 6:30 to 8 o'clock and then when they give a doctor's early, we go from 6:00 to 7:30. Attendance is good. I've, I've been at, I haven't been at all of them. I've been at three out of five. We always have a staff person there. I have no complaints, or had had no complaints. I'm sure if I had any, that somebody would tell me. So that, that works pretty well. Our trips to the P-PAC, they're always sporadic each year depending on the shows. We typically go with three. And then we ran it, we started throwing Promise Brewing Trips. It's our third year this year that we're doing. We started with workshops this past year. A wreath making around, for Thanksgiving time, and chocolate making in the, in the winter. And we, we capped it at 30, we filled up. I wrote open gym. We, there's two other programs that we unleashed. One was, was called Cash Club and I don't have to pay for it quickly, I apologize. And I can't give you the exact acronym for it. It's not, has nothing to do with money. Community, A, socialization, and hanging out. Because that's what those kids like to do. They want to be in a supervised setting, but they don't want to be supervised. So, but parents are comfortable, it's a drop-in center. We're charging $5 a child to come in. It's a three, two and a half hour to three hour slot, Thursday nights, and then we do Saturday afternoons. But we're going to base all of our rentals around all Saturday afternoons. It's three weeks out of four that we run per month, but it's, the Thursdays and Saturdays have to match the weekly. So schedule will be, will be put out. It's a really nice program. I really want to turn that into something. I think we have the kids, we have the parental support. It's, and I think I have the staff to do that. So it's just something moving forward that we're going to, I'm going to try to attempt. We're always looking to expand. When the numbers are there, you know, let's give them what they want. So the other thing that we, we did do, we bought a, we purchased a 30-foot movie screen, which is enormous. It's awesome. It would fill this room. We use that. Typically, it works well in our existing programs. We tried it three times to run it on a, on a Saturday night. We attempted it seasonally based on, you know, Halloween, Christmas, springtime, and it didn't go over so well. So first movie we canceled. Second movie, we had 50 people, which was good. And then last movie, we had 10 people. So we have one scheduled for two weeks from now. I canceled that. If, when it becomes costly, where we provide, it's a free movie, but we provide concessions that people buy. So we front the money for the concessions and we figure we'll get reimbursed for that. But when there's nobody here to reimburse you, it's, it's, it's all a negative. So I kind of figured out the situation. Saturdays in Sterling are very difficult to run an event. And I should have learned from the second Halloween party we had. We went from Friday night to Saturday, number was cut in half. So it's, you live and learn. But we, but the screen is useful. We use it all the time. So that's program-related finance. The revenue we took in from July 1st of last year to June 30th this year was $104,000, So we had, in our budget, we planned on, on taking 75,000 in residence, which we took in one of four. So with that, since we exceed, we met our goal and we exceeded it, I'm going to be going before the Board of Finance, petition to take the remainder of that money, which will be $29,000, 29,879, to see if we can put that into a recreation capital account. It's, again, that's nothing in the budget. So we met our goal for the budget and my plans for that, I'm really looking at pickleball or a skate park, but it will be a capital, capital project. I don't want to give any details yet because I don't know any. And we don't have the money yet. So what it is on the list of projects to get done, some of the other projects that were completed was our game room, and that was last, last January. And that is used for our middle school programs that we run. We have a container which will be delivered in a few weeks or so. I'm going to try and nail that down next week. Cross that off the list. And I'm also upcoming, I'm going to purchase a sign for the outdoor of our building that I want to put it on the building. As you come in, where the library has a sign on the left, I want to put a sign on the building, similar to the size of that shade, where Sterling Recreation is going to be run by you personally. I'm going to get approved for it and see what you think of it. Mount it right to the, right to the building. And the opening that's there has been there for a while and I take responsibility for it. But we have the weeds growing up, we have all the rock around. There's going, there's going to be a tree that goes in there. And I don't want, I, I don't want to do that until I have to labor that. So with the sign in the tree, I'm going to, they're going to work together.
There was a book written years ago called The Tree Grows in Brooklyn, but maybe this could be the tree that grows in Sterling.
Well, it's, I'm trying to find the right tree and I, and I'm trying to.
I can't see the John.
Yeah, being anal about it, but I want to do it the right way. So the, one more item, the park. We had met in the spring regarding Sterling Park. And my plan is to take the fielders there and turn it into a ball field, into a peeling ball field. We have the backstop. I want, we want to make an all-skin diamond that's playable with little league and girls' softball, co-ed softball, and men's softball. And I'm saying that or because it's, the men's softball is the furthest. It's, we have to, it's timed, it's a timing issue. As you know, we don't have a recreation, recreation forum or recreation agency. So I depend a lot on DPDW and they're great. And I fully understand that they are straight out every day. I am meeting with Alan at the end of the month, who I work very well with. It's just a matter of doing this the right way with the right timing. He has to, his crew has to scrape everything off and get rid of all the junk. And then we have to have a landscape team come in outside of Sterling and come in and do the whole makeover. So I haven't got prices on play yet because I know that's going to change as to when we can do it. My plan is to do it this fall. That all depends on meeting with the Board of Finance and seeing if they're going to allow us to move some money. We do have some money in a capital account that we can use. I just want to make sure it's, it's, I want to do it in one shot and move right away. That's what we're working on.
I don't normally ask questions. I ask more questions from the audience or a presenter, but in case anyone does have a question, I'm going to allow it this time. Do you have anything you want to ask Jason, they have already pulled up on? Yes, I figured you would. That's the reason I ask.
When you refer to Sterling Park, where is that?
It's across from the post office.
That's true.
Yes, in between the post office and Wyndham. The real cook park. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So. It's, it's a lot.
You wish, like to have any questions for Jason? I just, you and I have had many conversations about the recreation program. So you have a very good idea of how I feel about how things have gone. And I just can't say how, we're all pleased that how that program has expanded. And I think everything you've done has been to the benefit of the town. How much more we can ask, I simply don't know. Thank you. No more questions, I'll move on to the next item. Discussion regarding guardrails on State Federal Hill Road. That is the area that we have, just had the moment put in. The area is a dangerous spot without guardrails. We have a company who's under contract to do that. Atlas Fence is going to put guardrails there. They are going, they are just trying to work it into their schedule. The same situation involves the fencing, replacement of the fencing at the park. Good night.
Good night, Chris. Do you need me to say?
No, you're all set. Thank you.
Good on you. Thank you.
We have to change the fences. The park is going to be replaced and that too is being done by a local contractor, J.C. Fence, and we are waiting for him to be able to schedule that as well. Discussion regarding Board of Finance email address for Bob, for Chairman Bob Solberg. Bob just come to us and told us that the, he is not in favor of using his own personal email any longer for Board of Finance business, and I can't say that I blame him. Because all that stuff is F.O.W.I.A.L.B., and he doesn't think he wants to use his own. And so I've asked Cory to look into what it would cost for additional email and it's something like $2.25 a month. We have emails throughout the entire building. My personal opinion is I think we should offer the same thing to every board chair, whether they decide to take it or not. That's entirely up to them. But we should make the offer to each board chair. Primarily, the four that would be involved would be Board of Finance, Economic Development, Inlet Wetlands, and Planning and Zoning. At the moment, I don't see any reason for the Family Day Chairman chair to have an email, nor I would for the Agricultural Chairman at this point. But I think we should offer it to those four. And if they choose to take it, that would be up to them. Would I, I'd like to, would need a motion for that effect?
Make a motion.
Motion made and seconded. We offer email at the town's expense to those four listed boards and chairman of those boards.
We're talking select. I can start the selection on that too.
You want to include that?
Yes.
Then that motion, you went, would you pay it over here? He changed, amended the motion. You can't second that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Motion has been made and seconded that we offer the opportunity for email, town-sponsored email for those four board chairman as well as the chairman, well, the two members of the Board of Finance, uh, Board of Select, excuse me. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Okay, that's, that's front page. I'll go to back page. Discussion regarding new camera Wi-Fi. I've been doing a lot of electric covers for the gazebo. This comes from what Jason just referred to as the, the situation with the movie guy. They, Recreation threatened to have a movie out there a couple, a couple weeks ago. They required Wi-Fi to make the movie work and they didn't have it. Again, Cory has come to the rescue here and he's come up with prices for either just Wi-Fi or just cameras or a combination of the two. The cameras would be mounted on the building should they be, should we agree to do that. The cameras would be mounted on the building and they would focus on the audience. It may not be necessary now, but it seems to me that if they put Wi-Fi out there, it would be wise to do both at the same time for the future. What do you think about that, gentlemen?
I think we should do it. I, I, I agree with that because I think more cameras about and the Wi-Fi.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Yes. I'll make a motion that we put a new camera and the Wi-Fi and have heavy-duty locked-in device on the gazebo.
Okay. What he's referring to and the price for that, by the way, would be $1,745.91 with some additional electrical work being done. And the other portion of that is the fact that if you're going to have cameras out there, they obviously have to be powered. So that means they have to turn the power on and leave the power on at the gazebo or the pavilion all the time. Right now, that's all on a switch and a panel. And we, when we, we turn it on for the concerts or when it's used for something else and we shut it off later. There are several receptacles in that building and those would be able to be used by anybody and everybody if you had the power on all the time. Those receptacles right at the moment are covered with a plastic cover. It could be locked. It could also be broken with a baseball bat if someone wanted to get in. I hate to think of it that way, but you have no choice but to think of it that way. So the, the remedy for that would be to put a different kind of covers over the existing boxes that could not be broken with a sharp tool or baseball bat. That would cost us another $166. So my suggestion is that if we're going to do this, we should plan on a figure of about $2,500 all told for this. Is that something that you could, that I can say I have a motion for?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we authorize, authorize, I just, I'm all for cameras.
You're moving to authorize $2,500 for this project? Motion has been made and seconded that we authorize $2,500 to this project that's just been described. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item. Discussion regarding new camera in the gymnasium for the recreation department. The origin of that situation is this. Right after the summer rec program started, there was a problem with a youngster who lost an epi-pack. A lot of it had back, head back, you know, a backpack or something. Eventually, it was found, quite a little trouble in the meantime with the parents and whatever. It was found behind the bleachers or under the bleachers, I should say. Subject came up, would it possibly be a good idea to put in cameras? A camera or two? Was it two, Cory, or one?
A single camera.
Two cameras mounted on the wall that divides the gymnasium from the rest of the building, the walkway through the, the long wall there, that would focus directly on the bleachers. The kids in the rec program, whether it's the afternoon program or the summer rec program, spend a lot of time on the bleachers for one reason or another. It would be, probably be a good idea to have a camera to cover them. Cory, you can elaborate?
Sure. I, it was, so for the gymnasium, it'd be a single camera, be mounted right on the wall and it has a very full cool zoom, which just means we can zoom it in right to the bleachers. The cameras currently in there are focused on entries and exits. So it's not focused on actually what's going on inside the gym, just who's coming and leaving. So that would solve by covering the bleachers.
The monitor for those cameras will be located in the Recreation Director's office. So the idea is not to have the cameras running or monitored for every activity in there is primarily for when the kids are in the building, using the bleachers, using the gymnasium as well as the bleachers. The cost for that camera is $565 and you assure me that that's pretty much the entire cost, correct?
Yes, there's no electrical work. There's existing cabling there we'll be able to utilize.
Do I hear a motion to proceed with this?
Well, we can use that camera also for other.
You can use it for whatever you'd like. Can be used for anything. But it's just primarily, this is not meant to, to have someone sitting in Jason's office looking at that monitor to check every last thing that happens in there. It's just that it's a record of what happens in that building and it's something I think will be worthwhile in the long run. You make your motion, Pat, effector?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we put a camera facing the bleachers in the gymnasium.
And David agrees to second that motion. Any further discussion? Harry Dunn, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Discussion regarding the item, the idea to advertise any town-owned properties on our website when they, when they come up for sale. We don't own a lot of property, but we just thought it would be a good idea to put it on the website in case we want to sell something. That's something that you agree with? Motion made, seconded, that we do, we. Any property that comes up? Any property that comes up for sale that is more or less what you had in mind, Sarah?
Uh, yeah, so anything that we currently have for sale and anything that we gained that we would put up for sale would go up on the website. I was particularly thinking about industrial parks, the two lots that are in phase one currently, and then the two buildings that the business has moved out of and they're still looking to sell those, but putting those up also. But any other town-owned property throughout the town, if we're looking to sell it or if we're not looking to hold on to it for a specific reason, just putting it up on the website so that we have somewhere that we're advertising it. Because as of right now, we don't have anywhere.
Thank you. We could amend that to anything that we have for sale. That would, anything like the town garage, if we had a whole pile, we want to get rid of those, you know, that would be.
How would you amend that motion? District real estate, strictly. Just want to add in any, any town equipment?
Any town.
Excess town equipment?
Excess town equipment or, or real estate.
You want to make a second, a second motion? Motion has been made and seconded that we include any town excess equipment in, in that, that motion. So all in favor of that? that motion. So, all in favor of that? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is consider an appointment of Nancy Boyer as an alternate with a one-year term, expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-six to the Family Day Committee.
I meant all of those, so.
Motion made, seconded, that we point Nancy to the alternate position on the Family Day. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Um, motion carries. Schedule in a town meeting to approve the funds of thirty-two thousand dollars quoted by Mark Finley Jr. For the wall and replacement of doors and windows, door and windows, to come out of the facilities maintenance account. That's a capital account, that means we have to go to a town meeting to access that money. The doors and windows are questioned. The door is the one in Jason's office, which is a very old wooden door, it's an exterior door, that's gonna get replaced with a modern unit. If you look across the hall and across out of this window, here you can see four windows, that are steel frame windows that were there when the school was originally built, in fact, nineteen fifty-three. The windows are falling out of the frames, they need to be replaced with something far more modern. And it's the same situation exists in the very far corner of the building, next to the ramp for the seniors, another very small window. So it's five windows and one door, and that's, this, the contract price, the, the price we settled on is thirty-two thousand dollars. And, we need to go to the town, the Board of Finance will hopefully approve this next week, and we have a scheduled town meeting after that.
I make a motion to approve the thirty-two. Just because I did the walkthrough, and they definitely have to be, uh, reflected.
You are also approving the, the data, the, actually, we have to settle on a meeting night. A meeting night is
September?
September fourth.
Okay.
You want to include that?
Yes, yeah.
Motion has been made, do I hear a second? To conduct a meeting on the fourth of September?
Yep.
To
appropriate.
To appropriate the money from the bond balance, from the facility maintenance account for this purpose. All in favor? All opposed? All carry, motion carries. Approval of the bill.
A lot of paperwork here.
Multi-years.
What's that?
In multi-years, last year and this year.
We have one total here of three hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred twenty dollars and forty-two cents. That would be for the fiscal vouchers for seven fifteen, twenty-five to seven thirty-one, twenty-five?
For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, yep.
Okay.
Make a motion to pay the bill.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Sure.
Make a motion, second, we pay that bill? Uh, all in favor? Alright, all opposed? Motion carries. We have another, the vouchers, give me a very brief, thousand words or less, what a voucher is all about.
The voucher is all of the bills that I pay in that one check batch. So it's the voucher. That's okay, it's all of the checks that I send in the one check batch. So, I could have about ten bills, I could have three bills, I could have fifty bills if, if that happened that week. So the voucher is just all the bills that I paid on that specific check batch.
And that number is fifty-two thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and seventy-two cents.
That's for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
And fourteen thousand, nine hundred dollars, and that is payroll.
Yep.
On June thirty. Motion made, seconded, that we pay the bills from the vouchers, whatever they might be. All, all, all in favor of that motion? All opposed? Motion carries. Treasury report. I wanna take a hard attack when I read this earlier about building maintenance. I was reading last year instead of this year, the mail I wrote only one month into the year, and we're already in trouble. Anyway, I finally get the dates right, and I forget that one.
So I will give you an update on last year's Treasury report that you have there. Um, I worked with Sarah Howley at the school tonight to try and get our numbers matched up. I finished putting in the journal entries that I had received the end of last week, I still have a few more to do this week, but we have between the school and the Board of Select, and we have about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we came in under budget. About ninety thousand of that was the school, the other, about seventy to eighty thousand was the Board of Select. That is in the efforts of the IT, cutting down the freezing bills, um, that's contracts being renegotiated, and all of those little things.
So, together we can then, how much, under what?
About a hundred and seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand dollars?
Yep.
I think the towns can't say that. Very nice weekend.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion for the Treasury report?
All of you agree, something. Make most breaks, uh, motion.
Motion has been made, seconded, to accept the Treasury report? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Final item of business, is any other business to come before the board, and that is a resignation letter that I am going to read from Ross Faruja. Says Town of Sterling Selectment, August sixth, dated today, August sixth, two thousand twenty-five. After fifteen years plus of being on the Planning and Zoning Board and the Economic Development Committee, I have decided to resign from both, effective September first, two thousand twenty-five. I have enjoyed my tenure on both boards, and have learned a lot about the town and the community. I thank the Selectmen and the town staff for all your support. You are a great group, obviously does not know us very well. Sincerely, Ross Faruja. Do I hear a motion to accept that? Motion made, seconded, that we accept that, we, that, ready nation, we regret. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other business to come before the Board Select tonight? Harry Dunn, I'll ask the motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
Seconded, all in favor, do we adjourn? Aye, all opposed? All in favor to adjourn. Thank you all for attending, we appreciate the attention. This is a big crowd. Fifty people in the audience. There were six with Jason. Sorry about the interruption, I'm gonna tell the show.